Welcome to the Town Act and Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, April 7th, 2022 at 6:04. All stand for pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
Did you make another packet there, Seth? I'll need you.
Yeah, I had two of those. It's behind your computer. Where's your packet?
This is south, so come on.
Soon, soon we'll be able to do this.
Okay, thank you. Those two are us.
Actually, it's this one. Sorry.
You guys dealing with the minutes, or?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of March 10th and March 17th.
My second?
Oh, David. For nothing.
There's also the minutes of March 24th, but I wasn't at the meeting.
My second.
My second?
Oh, in favor?
I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, uh, we'll start off with the old business, uh, I'll call you Matt, but it's David Pepin here, but since you're both involved, we'll use both names.
Do we have a new, have we seen a new application for this?
No.
So what exactly did you, was corrected with these?
So the deeds are now in the, um, the names on the deeds match the names on the plans. It's no longer in the, in the exchange. Um, we got everything out of the exchange into the official names of the three entities, I guess, that own the properties. Um, and, um, so David J. Pepin Gravel is one of the entities, and it owns, um, one parcel here, and then it owns a portion of another parcel here. So my thought is to have the application under David J. Pepin Gravel LLC under one entity that is the owner of both properties, um, rather than having it under three, you know, the application under three different, um, entities. And I see the comments that Jason, uh, gave me here from the planner, um, or North Star, I guess.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, and they recommend that we just use one name for the application. Otherwise, they'd have to check the financial and technical capacity of all three companies versus just one. So that seems to be the best path to move forward. Uh, yeah. I knew that was a concern. And I guess tonight, we're gonna, we're gonna try to hopefully schedule a site walk to get you guys out there to see the site, walk around. Um, you know, you can go for a ride with my dad in the side by side if you dare to.
The walk sounds better.
I think a walk sounds better. I agree with that. But, um, yeah, I'm seeing some other kind of comments here that Jason shared with me. It looks like we, um, may need to consider that this will be under site plan review, um, because we've got, I guess we're gonna have to kind of weed this out. Um, yeah.
So just, um, I sent the copy of the email that I received today from, from Ben Smith to you guys. And it just says that by him looking at the scope of the project, it's, it's gonna do both. It's gonna hit both sides, conditional use, but it's gonna, the review will be a site plan review as well. He also recommends that, that, uh, the board makes a motion to set an escrow for, um, the consultation review, like for the review process for, uh, for them. You know, you know where I'm coming from, but, um, so, uh, I had asked him what he felt would be a good starting number, and he thinks that, uh, for the size of this project, a good starting number is, is right around $2,000. Obviously, I told Matt that anything that isn't used will be immediately returned. Um, and if we have to go more, then that will be readdressed at that time. But, um, so the board, that's a, that's a motion the board needs to make to assign that, uh, escrow. And Matt's agreed to, to fork up the cash. Not that he wants to, but he will. The, and, and, and then Ben's gonna provide, uh, North Star is gonna provide me with a formal, um, letter for the Pepins, um, with his findings on, on the applications. Uh, he also feels that at this point, um, it looks to be complete, but he's gonna really dig into it even deeper, um, and get back to me. Um, he said he, he tried to do it by the end, by the end of the week, um, this week, but I told him, you know, just in a timely manner, you know, I'd like to see it, would be nice. And, uh, so he's gonna formally address that so that Matt can know, Matt and his father can know if they need to, uh, address anything with the application further as we, as we move forward. So with that being said,
we do have a, uh, just, I could update you, we have a vernal pool study that's gonna be getting started, like literally next week. Um, so we should have the results back on that pretty quickly. They're also doing a wetland delineation study on the larger parcel on site. The other smaller parcel had already been done, but, um, all that information will be coming to us, so it's not gonna be up in the air anymore. Um, we'll be able to get that all. The next set of plans that we submit, we'll have all of that shown right on it, so, yeah. So when do you guys want to come out?
Well, when are those, uh, wetlands gonna be, uh, marked on the ground? Are they gonna do that when they survey them, you think?
I think they will, yeah.
So it would be good for us to go after that, that was done, right?
Uh, yeah, let me.
I mean, that would just kind of give us a reference to what we're looking at.
I, I'm not 100% positive whether they're gonna flag all of them or not. I'd have to ask the engineer then.
Well, we would ask that you flag the outside of the resource protection buffer.
Yeah.
So that we can see that.
I could ask.
You know, for the site walk, I think we might, there might be other things, like the building envelope for the storage building.
Yeah.
And maybe where the, you know, the wash plant's gonna go, maybe where the ponds are gonna, you know, just with the proposed roads are gonna be somewhat anyway. I mean, there might already be a skid road there or something, but.
Is it heavily wooded still, or is it pretty well cut?
It's pretty, pretty well cut. Bob Libby cut the property, um, quite a bit. There are some areas that are a little thicker than others, but there's trails everywhere, as you probably know. And there's, like where we kind of want to do some, um, like extraction near West Shore Drive, there is like a really big opening right there, which is kind of a good spot. And that's also near where the, kind of the wash plant area is, like, I don't know if I need to actually have a surveyor go out there and like formally mark it. I think I'm competent enough to hopefully like show you guys where that will be on site, unless you really feel like I need to have.
Well, you are gonna have things like the Hawk River Protection District delineated on the ground at some point, right?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
So, I mean, I, I don't know. It's kind of up to the board to.
Yeah.
So how much are we gonna be able to see when we're out there? It's kind of a.
Okay. They probably will flag the, the wetlands. I would guess that they would.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, there's, there's a few of them where they're complete, well, there's one that's completely within the extraction area, right? One of the potential vernal pools.
Yep.
But I guess, I mean, I don't know how we, how the board wants to set up the site walk. If we want to be coming in from both sides here, or take it easier to see everything, or, or how much, how much the board wants to see, so. I mean, like this.
I'd probably come in from H Road and I can show you right where the entrance for the road's gonna be.
You put a stake there already, I saw.
Yeah, yep, that is out there. Um, show you where the entrance is gonna be, kind of show you where the, the maintenance garage would be, um, that first extraction area along H Road. If you guys want to go up there and check that out, we could. Um, and then there's a trail right there that takes you. The trail is essentially the roadway that we would use, um, going through there, and we could follow that trail over towards the West Shore Drive side, um, if you wanted to do it that way.
Yeah. Well, it's quite a bit, a bit of land to cover. So we, we want to know, I mean, we definitely, I definitely want to see this, the proposed road, because it's something we have to be dealing with, um, as well as the location of all the structures, just for a general sense of the project.
Right.
The different extraction area, the, you know, potential, the stream crossing you have between the two areas off of West Shore Drive side. You know, like the, the size of the growth of one that stream now, just different, but.
We could go check out the, the land trust piece as well, if you wanted to look at that.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be good to, good to look at the, uh, proposed easement of entrance to that.
Yep.
I think even if he laid out where, kind of where the building would be, or the wash plant yourself, instead of, you know, get it close enough, that would help.
Yeah, for the building and wash plant, sure.
He could do that himself.
I would think so, or even just, I mean, it kind of depends what the terrain is like in there. Is it wooded right now in those areas?
It's really not.
Small stuff, I think.
Yeah, it's awesome. It's a lot of small stuff. There were some trees left behind, but it's fairly sparse. It's not bad for walking. Um, it's opened up, it's opened up in like a few places. At the entrance where the maintenance garage is gonna be, it's already kind of opened up there. Um, I think Bob Libby at some point was taking some material out of that little spot right there. Um.
Great stakes, it'd be a good visual. I mean, if you just put great stakes in, we would.
Great stakes?
Yeah, a little flag.
Well, yeah, that's what I was thinking for the building.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'll do that. Yeah. And then I, and I will talk to them. You seem concerned about having the, uh, RP area flagged, so.
Yeah, just because it's so, we kind of have a pinch point between the, the vernal pool area and the RP area and the road and the extraction and everything. It's kind of like a focal point there that.
Right.
I'd just be interested to view that, because we'll be discussing it.
Yeah, um, I could ask, I could ask them when they go out there to do that, put a flags.
So when is he coming again? Do you have a definite date?
I heard that next week was the first part of the vernal pool study. And then I think in like two or three weeks, they follow up with the second part of it. So it's gonna be like another three weeks probably before the study's done. You know, it's gonna, then it's gonna take the engineers probably two weeks to revise the plans. So I'm kind of hoping we don't have to wait super long. I'd like to try to do the site walk as soon as we can, but, um, I can certainly get back to Jason probably on exactly how long it's all gonna take. I think, as I understand it, I think the first week they go look for, um, maybe the turtles, and then three weeks later, they come back and they're looking for salamanders and something, something else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So our next meeting's the 21st, and our follow-up meeting after that would be the 5th. I suggest a Saturday doing this, because I don't think it's gonna be just a half an hour out there.
It's getting wider all the time.
Is that, would you, would you suggest the same?
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna be a quick little.
Yeah.
You know, we're not dealing with that, so we.
Fifty by a hundred, we can't walk. Yeah, I mean, it's probably gonna take three or four hours.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know how long it'll take.
I mean, I think you're also, because you gotta carry the, you know, the camera with us. I think Gavin and all our concern is if people at home, because of cameras there, they'd want to see where all these stakes are for, you know, they.
Okay, yeah.
That would help more.
Yeah, maybe we, maybe we can't really schedule the site walk tonight, because we don't know when that work will be done.
Yeah, I was hoping we, we would be able to, but if it's, uh, I didn't, yeah. It's, that's up to you guys. But, um, you want that, you want all that stuff marked prior.
Well, I mean, a part of it too is that if they determine these things are significant or not significant, or that might, you know, influence how much of the property we're looking at.
What, may I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
You don't think it's gonna be more than a month? Because you said two, three weeks.
Yeah.
So what if we set it for the 14th of May? And then if we have to go out again? Just as a suggestion?
Is that a?
That's the 14th of May.
What day of the week is that?
Saturday. Because we are at the 7th now, so one, two, three, four, that, that's the, that's five weeks out. So that should be safe to do.
Next week.
So it's not gonna be yet?
Yeah, there, yeah.
Yeah, it does run every week, really.
Right. I, I, yeah, and I, the wetland delineation's gonna be done in two weeks. It's the vernal pool thing that, it's, it's a bunch of, it's the timing I don't understand with what's going on.
Salamanders come out first, and the turtles are the second.
Salamanders first, okay. Right.
I'm just judging by the turtles I see down by the river. I think they come out after the salamanders.
I, I don't know. I mean, some of these species are very.
I would safely say in three weeks that it's gonna, everything's, all the wetlands will be marked out.
Yeah, I think salamanders come out first. They only go down a little bit, with turtles, they go a little bit deeper.
Right.
It's pretty ruined by May. You can plant your garden.
So you think that you can have them done?
I think three weeks, I don't know. I'd like to try not to push it five or six weeks out. That's far.
If you can get them to did it done before the 30th.
Which one?
Get you back in front of us.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's.
Does that sound a little bit better?
Yeah, that sounds better.
I just suggested they do north, south, east, and west mark.
Yeah, the more, the more, the better, so we don't.
And that was the other thing, the more we can see, visualize stakes.
So he's gonna, he's gonna contact his, the survey company, his wetland specialists, and he's gonna see if he can get them to get all, and make sure that they can do it all. But he'd like to try to get it for the 30th, so then he can come back on the 5th, and we'll have that walk done, if, if they say that they'll be able to do all the wetland stuff. If not, then we'll have to push it out further.
Well, we can also do a second.
Well, he's trying to avoid. He's trying to avoid pushing it on so far.
Two days, and do, do, you know, one from West Shore Drive.
This is a big parcel. It might take a more than, more than one trip.
It might, it might for whole view anyway, because the first trip out there, just kind of mark these areas. I mean, eventually the engineer's gonna do it anyway.
Yeah.
This helps you, right? Because now they're marked.
I, I'm gonna need to have it done no matter what, yeah, exactly, so.
And those would be the guys that market, so they're going to know how to do it. Of course, your engineers would have to do all the structural sets.
Yeah, it'll be done definitely by the 30th, so if we could try to shoot for that date, that'd be great. And then I could come in for plenty more meeting, and it'd be fresh in your mind.
Well, he's trying to get to the 30th.
30th.
Trying to do the 30th, April.
Yeah.
Next week, you're saying that one fellow comes out next week?
Comes out Monday.
Got flycatcher? No.
That's Tiggan Bond, yeah.
Then he comes out two weeks. That would be the week of the 25th. Right?
Yeah.
They do it on the 30th.
Okay.
Try it.
Well, if, so contact your, your specialists, see what they have to say. Let me know. And then, uh, we're gonna be meeting next week for a workshop.
So if they say they can't get it done by then, then we could push it to that.
We'll have to push it, yeah. We're kind of relying on them at this point.
Yeah, yeah, it's a rush.
Paying a little more money. Yes, if they don't have it done by that week of the 30th, then we'd have to push it back to, the earliest would be the 7th of May.
Well, we'll be on, we'll be on their schedule at that point, so let them, so just let us know, let me know, um, what they have to say. Um, but as of right now, is it all right if you guys schedule it for the 30th? And then if that changes, then I'll let you guys know Thursday during the workshop.
Start it at 10.
Let's get along this weekend.
10 a.m.?
10 a.m., yeah. That sounds great.
You want to do it on the H Road first?
Yeah, we'll start there, yeah. See how, how it goes.
All right.
Could probably.
Who do you, uh, think will be there from your department there?
It'd be me, my dad, um, I mean, I can have, if you feel like you want one of the engineers to tag along, I could ask them to come. Um, if you're good with just me and my dad, that'd be probably about it. Um.
Should we park on Red, on Red Gate, the trail, or the road, or?
I'd probably park on, um, what's that, Street on the left-hand side?
Lakeside?
What? Lakeside, yeah, Lakeside Drive. I think that would, because that's really close to where the entrance is and stuff.
We just gotta make sure we're not blocking anybody's.
Yeah.
Path.
The Red Gate one would be, uh, yeah, Red Gate? No. What's the first one you said?
Red Gate, and you got Lakeside Drive, and then you got Red Gate.
Well, on the right-hand side's Red Gate, right?
It's Afters.
It'd be easier, because if this, if you park on Lakeside, think about if a fire truck needs to get down there and we're all jammed up on that road.
Yeah.
That'd be my only.
Can I make a suggestion? Why don't we meet here in carpool?
We'll meet down there. Yeah, you can park, I mean, you can park on Red Gate. It's gonna be a little bit of a further walk, but it's not a big, too big of a deal. Yeah.
Maybe Joe will let us park at his pit. Joe Room is right across the street, too.
All lands keep leaving, they're closed on Saturday, aren't they?
Yeah.
He'll just park in there.
Yeah.
It's right across the street, right at one state.
That'd be perfect.
They have gate.
That's a little ways in. There's a little bit of room there.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
I'll get that. Good. All right, um, so you guys want to make a motion for the, the site walk as well as the escrow, somebody?
What paperwork do we have from, uh, Ben Smith right now? If you don't have one. I may have it. This is it. Okay, no, I do have one of these. Well, I'll take it. It's in there somewhere.
They can do it in one motion.
So I need one of those copies back.
It's the third bullet down. Gavin.
Yeah.
So I make a motion, we, did Joey make a motion?
No.
Okay, make a motion that we do a site walk for the Pepin Gravel pit on April 30th?
Yeah.
At 10 a.m.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? And we need the other motion.
Oh, okay, um.
$2,000.
I'll make a motion that we establish a review escrow account, the amount of $2,000.
Pable to the Town of Acton.
Okay.
My second?
All in favor? For nothing? All right.
All right. You know, I was thinking I could, uh, there's, you can get onto our property, there's like a trail right there, but there's a huge log that's in the way, and I can, I could go push that thing out of the way with something, if you guys want, if, if you want to just pull in there. Yeah. Yeah, I got the equipment. Uh, I need a permit for that.
Good?
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
Yeah, have a good night.
Do you need a copy of this for your dad, or are you gonna share what, what you just want to interpret for him?
So do you have an extra copy that's not highlighted over there, because all of them went the other way? This one that's not highlighted, yeah.
That's fine. Thanks, guys. Congratulations.
All right, uh, except new business. Seth McCoy Trucking Excavation. 2491 H Road. Lot 207-001, application for conditional use for storage and process of reclaimed asphalt.
Actually, can you run downstairs? And, uh, in case the board wants to, I don't know if I need it, I'm actually holding this up. Forget what I said. Forget everything I just said. You got a colorful lot.
Yeah, the, the colors don't exist on some of the spots.
So Seth has put together this packet, um, for you guys viewing, and I think everybody's, hopefully had a time. So Seth has put together this packet, um, for you guys viewing, and I think everybody's, hopefully had a time to review it, I think. I sent it home with you guys last Thursday or so, um, so that there was, you guys had a chance to look at it, um. I guess one of the major things in here is one of the letters from the state of their interpretation on, on asphalt and inert fill.
Were there, was there a second page to that? I just saw one page.
I don't think so, I got one page.
I didn't see, you know, like, an ending to it, signature, anything like that.
I was in the last meeting, so I didn't get it.
Oh, you didn't see, oh.
It's alright, I'll, I'll look at it at some point, like, I'm not gonna have time to read it now.
No, you're not, I'm just showing you this letter from the state that I was talking about.
Right, he was gonna review that with us.
Yeah, there's only. One page.
No, there's just, yeah.
Because in the beginning, it says something about double absurd.
Also, I went down to the site today just for verification, um, so that you guys can know that, uh, give me a second, I will, I just wanna disconnect from here, so I can go on my email. Um. Snap some photos of, um, I believe where I thought that the pile was, I hope I'm not wrong, but, uh, wouldn't be the first time.
Well, he said, he said he had it out of there, what, three days after?
I had most of it out of there at the last meeting, but I didn't quite have it all up. I think the last meeting was on the 21st.
Right.
And I don't think I got the stuff out of there till the 24th.
Right.
All of it. I thought I was gonna have it off the memory.
Seth, do you get a lot of it, or, or, do you get a lot of the, uh, asphalt?
Just out from Jo, uh, no, not really, I mean, I had.
Just curious, just curious.
Uh. Think I had, um, over the course of last summer. I didn't have, so 366, 220, 366. So that's 560 yards, that's what I hauled out, I just counted what I hauled out.
Oh, I don't know, and that was just from my year, that pile that was in there?
Uh, so let's see, Seth, maybe you could help me out, which one would be in this, was this where it was, right here? It was right there.
Anyway, it's all freshly graded, right?
Well.
As you drive in.
It's as you drive in on the left.
The right.
Right, I mean.
Yeah.
That's as you drive in.
There's a little corner there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, looks.
So that was there.
Looks it.
How many yards you think you had there when you hauled it out? Would you just, is that what you think you have for an average?
I think it's just at 560, right?
Well, I mean, it would depend on the year, but I mean, yeah, that was all of last year.
Okay.
I didn't, I just saw this paper, I didn't have a chance to read it, so you just handed me? Uh, yeah, Pat had handed to me that, to me at the beginning. I haven't read it yet, but we're not, we're not doing rap, we're doing asphalt. Yeah. Which is very similar, but rap is, I wouldn't know, because I've tested it, but I would think rap would have a much higher dust content, because that's directly off the milling. I'm, I'm doing chunks of asphalt, then crushing it to like three-quarter inch. This is, this is ground, this is very consistent, right from the get-go, it's like little teeth that grind it up.
So what you took away was not black tar?
I did, but I, I haven't read this yet, but it says what is rap, and it says it's, it literally, the first line says it's asphalt millings and grindings, and I'm not bringing either one of those in, I'm bringing an asphalt.
Recycled asphalt pavement.
Yeah, recycled asphalt pavement, that's pretty much what you're doing, right?
Yes, but I'm just saying, this thing references, they're testing, I'm just really quickly, it's referencing millings. Which millings are a little bit different, millings are actually ground from the road, there's a lot more dust in millings, it's very fine, it's a lot finer.
Hmm.
And it, honestly, if I could get my hands on milling, so I wouldn't be able to, that's passing, you can, they use it, they reuse it in the roads, they put it right back in the mix, most asphalt. Because it's clean, you know what I'm saying, it's controlled, it is definitely all asphalt, so they usually put it right back into the mill.
All you're doing is busting it up back into little rocks.
Correct. Do you bring it in in chunks that you scooped off the road? Yeah. And then drop it? So we're, we have a call reclaimed asphalt, most site guys call this, because millings, millings are 100% asphalt, and reclaim has a little bit of gravel mixed in, because you're digging it out.
Right, you're cutting it with a diamond blade, so I dig, lift it.
Yeah, those big machines will go down the road and take like eight feet out at a time, or whatever.
So you're not gonna grind that?
I'm gonna crush, I'm not grinding.
He's not making rap, what he's doing is returning it to its original shape and form, which is little rocks.
I, I'm crushing it.
He's crushing.
Gr, uh, millings and grindings are ground.
It's just not as fine.
It's not as fine, you know, getting that dust.
It's similar, it's very similar.
Very similar process, but it's a little, it's a different product.
Less particulates?
I would say my end, I don't have any testing, but would be a lot less, because we're taking the big chunks and running up through a crusher, they're actually milling, like, if you see them when they're doing it, there's tons of dust. There's usually wet, they're wetting the road down when they do, they do milling on the road.
Yeah, well, maybe we should stop talking about what they do, and start talking about what you do.
Well, I'm not, but this paper, I, that you just handed me, says millings and grindings, and I'm not doing.
Well, they both refer to RAP, reclaimed asphalt pavement.
Okay.
Right, I mean, that is, my main concern is that there will be chemicals leaching into the aquifer, and that he's in the aquifer protection district, it's designed there to protect the aquifer, um, and I honestly, I don't feel like this this is gonna protect the aquifer, but, you know.
Well, technically, an aquifer is underground or above ground. The lakes you see are not the aquifers that you can see.
Right, well, exactly, Moose Pond. Yeah, it's right there, I mean.
Anything leaching through the soil is into the same water as if you dumped it in the river.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't see anything in here, what do, what do you have for your process here, it's just?
It's the same as the gravel, you run it through the crusher. And, I mean, it's, I don't know how to explain it, other than what I've given you guys, it's inert fill. I can legally, in this town, use it as fill, I can reclaim the pit with asphalt, that's, that your own, uh, rules allow it, and it's the state allows it, I can literally put reclaim down instead of loom, to reclaim the pit, and that's completely legal. Majority of pits are in aquifer protection districts across the whole state, so this is nothing new, or anything I'm asking special permission for. And I honestly don't understand why it even has to be at a planning board, because your own comp plan says that it's con, it's, it's CEO review. I shouldn't even honestly be here, it's, it's an R, it's not a conditional use, it's a similar, like use.
Where are you in the land use chart that you feel like you're referring to?
Alright, let me go through the packet. I gave you, on page 12 of your land use chart, or that has your definitions. If you go to the aquifer protection district, there's an R. It says uses are similar to conditional uses, which you guys all agreed, almost, majority of you agreed on camera, that it was similar. And R is CEO review.
No, that was, we agreed that the grinding of stumps was similar to your.
No, no, we talked about the asphalt.
But we talked about.
We said, I didn't, you guys actually said.
And we didn't do anything with it.
So we were gonna basically punish me, that was my boo-boo, we're gonna come back and talk about it later.
Well. So where in the land use chart are you?
If you go to page 12.
Yeah.
Page 12 isn't in the.
I'm sorry, page 17, it tells you the uses are, it, I'm in the aquifer protection district. Which was your concern, I didn't know I was in aquifer protection district until you pointed it out, and.
When you buy the property, that's something that you'd want to look into.
I understand, but we, it was a pretty quick process.
So, so, and then which letter of the land use chart are you referring to?
I.
Uses which are similar to conditional uses.
Which, I said this in several of the planning meetings I was here, I don't understand why I'm being this is such a, why you guys are making such a big deal about this, I didn't realize that it was an issue, and when I did, I stopped. And I did what I said I was gonna do, but you guys just, I mean, I don't really see what I'm doing wrong.
Well, you're not doing anything wrong, we're going through the process, um, so yes, under I, you're in the critical rural, so it's C, conditional use permit. The aquifer protection, protection district is just an overlay of the other districts, it's in part of all the districts, it's not a standalone district.
Is it, under I, under I, that doesn't say R?
It does, aquifer protection district overlays the other districts, you're in the critical rural district.
You literally just used the aquifer protection district as the reason I couldn't do it, so now we're gonna jump.
There is both districts, the aquifer protection district is a water body that overlays the other districts.
Overlays the other districts.
Right, exactly.
And the way I, I'm not a lawyer, but the way I read your book, that aqu, that little line on the end for aquifer supersedes the other line.
It doesn't supersede it.
So what's the point, what's the point even having it, then?
Because we put aquifer protection district in as a district, and it goes through all of the uses, and some of the uses are very specific to it. And others, there's an NA, or, but the fact is, you're in the critical rural district, so you do need a conditional use permit, so that's probably what we're here to do tonight.
I will agree to disagree with that, but I'm here doing that conditional use, so I don't see, think there'll be an issue, because I provide the information I need to. But I think that if it went to court, I think I probably would win.
I don't, I don't see a conditional use application in front of me for this project.
It should be, it should, you should have one.
I can. Alright, so you are applying for a conditional use permit.
I am applying for conditional use permit, but I don't believe I have to. He's just stating.
Oh.
It, so he's applying for a conditional use permit for gravel.
Oh, I got it now, I just.
Yeah, for, um, reclaimed asphalt, the storage and process of reclaimed asphalt.
Mm-hmm.
Your own ordinances, rules, codes, all say that asphalt is inert fill, and is, and is a common clean fill. So literally, a dirt road. Next, a, a dirt road on any lake can, can use reclaim, and you're telling me that now you guys are concerned about the contaminants? And I brought the literature in, it's minimal, everything is contaminated, anything we do is contaminated, but it's controlled, and I've contacted the state, I contacted everybody that I would contact for the information and provide it to you. I, I didn't realize, it does look like there's a second page to that email, I didn't realize it doesn't have a signature, I printed it out off my computer and sent it to him, so if there's a second page to that, I was looking for it. I printed everything, the packet that you had sent me, um. But I, I got an email from the state, who, uh, the guy who handles the solid waste and the contaminants, I, I got everything.
Mm-hmm. It doesn't mean that we need to allow this use in the aquifer protection district in the town of Acton.
It says it's CEO review.
No, no, we just went through that one, and you said.
You and me have this big difference on how we agree on that.
You, you just filled out the application for conditional use.
Because you guys. If, from the end of November to the middle of January, end of January, you guys continually said that you wanted that gone, because I did not ask permission to bring it in, even though your own rules are very vague, and I didn't think I needed it. I took the time and studied it after November, when I found, when you mentioned it at the pit, that that shouldn't be there, that's when I started researching it, because if you look in your own code, you're allowed to bring in inert fill, which the state defines as inert fill. I didn't know I was breaking any rules, after you guys pointed out, I immediately stopped hauling it in, we talked about it every other week for two months. You made it a condition to remove it from my stump pile, we put a condition on my permit, that we were gonna talk about it at a later date. Because I honestly don't think that anybody in this room, except for maybe you, that it's a big deal. But I had done my due diligence and found the information. It, your, your code, I disagree with how you're reading it, because I don't see how the aquifer protection district has its own set of rules, that would mean that those rules contradict themselves, you can't say you need a conditional review and a CEO review. You can't say you need to, I mean, look at them, they're all.
You do, every conditional use is reviewed by the CEO before it's brought to us.
If this is an error in your code, it's your error, but it's not an error, it's in the law, this is your law, this is what you have to follow, not your opinion. You're a planning board, you have to follow, you're not supposed to have an opinion before you come to this meeting, that's against the law.
No.
You you refuse to entertain what I have to say.
You're, you're getting a little bit, um, lengthy in your debate here, and honestly, it's not being appreciated by the board who is trying to address your application.
Okay. What more can I possibly bring in for you, Gavin? I brought in everything I'm supposed to.
I don't think, I don't think you need to bring anything in, I never asked you to.
You keep bringing up this contaminating the soil, though, over and over.
Contaminating the water.
So.
Water is the economy of.
Put a bunch of septic fields in, would that be contaminating the water?
We, we're not trying to do this tonight, we're trying to.
On asphalt instead of septic, like.
That's contaminant, though.
Well, it's true, but it's a different land use, and it's viewed differently by all the authorities you just mentioned, as well as the town itself. Residential uses are different than industrial uses, your use is mineral extraction, and that is taking materials out of the pit. There are not pits in Acton where materials are hauled in and stored, that's not really something that is done. And we did go to the length of discussing the stumps with you, and found that, yes, we've decided you could do that, but I don't think we need to keep changing your conditional use and messing with this for a use that is not beneficial.
It's actually in my conditional use that we can go back and talk about this use.
We're talking about it right now.
And we're gonna keep talking about it every other week.
Well, come on back next time, then.
There's people on this board, they got my neighbors upset with me, they got all kinds of rumors started about me on that pit, stuff that I didn't do, I never cut a piece of grass.
I don't think we need to continue this tonight, I think we need more time to review the materials, and then.
You were biased, you should recruit yourself from the meeting.
I'm not biased, because I like clean water, that's not bias.
Uh, do you discourage the town from paving on their paving budget, we're trying to talk about asphalt, do you discourage the town to back?
Hold on, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about. I feel like this.
I also put down how much it cost me exactly.
For us to really resolve this tonight.
You had this information, I, I sent this information weeks ago.
He wasn't here last week.
He wasn't here.
In all fairness, I gave you guys this exact same information the last time you brought it up, in, in November.
It's fine, I understand what you're saying, and.
You didn't give it to us in this depth either, Seth.
I gave you the exact same information.
Yeah, but there's more.
It's the same stuff.
Yeah, but there's more to it now than there was when you gave it to us originally.
What's there more to?
Even either, I'm telling you right now, what you. I didn't either, I'm telling you right now, what you gave us then to now is different, this packet is thicker.
We added it over the meetings, that is, all the stuff compiled.
Either way.
So, there's a, page, there's, on page five, there's a, in, in what he has presented, there's a thing that actually addresses leaching of pollutants from reclaimed asphalt pavement. Uh, if we wanna just, I guess, just take a pause and just look at something, you know, so everybody can. Settle down a second.
On page five of Seth's packet?
Well, not page actual five, but he has a packet towards the end.
Right.
It's of the, uh, leaching characteristics of recycled asphalt and pavement, um, on page five, but just.
Oh, five in the, in the back sort of?
Yeah, in the back, I apologize, there's a.
There's a noise, it's. Yeah, probably. So what are we trying to point out Jason?
I just don't know, I just happen to, just trying to change the subject for a second.
Right, well, I mean, it says right here with, it leaches pollutants of unknown risks, and I feel like that's not something we wanna be plopping on top of our future water supply for the town, I mean, that's why the aquifer protection district's there.
I'm not disagreeing with anything that you're saying tonight Gavin, I just know that our previous C E O has made people use, um, crushed gravel in, on the shore, and to reclaim, or, and keep some of these driveways from eroding into the, into the lake.
Well, once, as I just said, residential and industrial uses are two different things, it's not really what we're talking about tonight. I understand we're talking about the use of the material in the town, but this is of much larger scale than that.
Okay.
I mean, how many yards of material are we talking about when somebody puts it on their driveway? You know, and here we're talking about the actual storage, long-term storage and processing of hundreds, if not thousands, of yards of material, less than two feet above the water table. It just doesn't, I, I don't, I think he has plenty of use in his property with the existing gravel pit, the stumps, I mean, there's a, a lot of, we're not prohibiting his, his working his property in any way. And I, it says right here, change of use structure of land under aquifer protection district, that use of a structure may not be changed to another use unless the code enforcement officer, after reviewing the written application, determines the new one.
The definition of structure is a building or premises, in your book.
It says right here, change of use or, of a structure or land, 4.1, 3.4, it says or land, the actual verbiage in the paragraph doesn't say or land right there, but then it does say, determines that the new one will have no greater adverse impact on the sand and gravel aquifer than the existing use, and I feel like it is gonna have a greater impact, and we could save ourselves those meetings that you're so looking forward to by, you know, finishing this conversation tonight.
So, I can legally bring in the asphalt to, to maintain my road into the pit for dust control, I can sell it to somebody else, not store it there, but I can sell it to somebody else, I can literally grade the next road up, the Curtis's Road's on if I wanted to, or Anderson Cove Road with reclaim. And you guys think that's okay, but bringing it in there, processing in, and, and making that product, you somehow think that's not right? Because I mean, the town, realistically, the town, H Road's Commerce Road, so we'll go with Commerce, so are you gonna say that you don't think that the rail commissioners or the selectmen rather, should allot, because there is clearly, in all of the reports, a lot more contaminants in new asphalt curing than there is in old fully cured asphalt.
It's not really what we're talking about tonight.
But you said commercial use.
Well, it's just my way of differentiating between.
Even though it's recommends driveway at a residential property and a commercial mineral extraction site. But the state defines it as inert fill, I, I have nothing more I can prove than that.
That's fine, we, we have the full.
You have to go by the facts I give you.
To be more stringent than the state.
But you have to go by the facts I give you, and even the paper you're giving.
No, I don't have to go by the facts you give me from the Virginia Department of Transportation, and they themselves say may be suitable.
And then it says to refer to your local town, state, which I did.
And here we are.
I called the highest authority in the state that does environmental, and got a letter from them.
I think you're confusing two issues. First of all, what is legal does not necessarily mean it's allowed.
Your town allows a thousand yards of fill, inert fill, to be hauled, I can take a load of, I could have taken, hold on, let me finish, I listened to you guys official, I could have taken that dirt that I trucked out, I paid, haul out of town, because I said I would, I, I did my word, even though I really don't think legally I had to, but I did it. I could have given that to the Three Rivers Land Trust across the street and dumped it in a wetland, not in a wetland, just on the side of the road, and it would have been totally legal. Because your town says it's okay, it's, it's, your town, it's in your own code that it's inert fill, it's, there's nothing wrong with it. Whatever process, it's, it's inert, re, crushed up asphalt is inert fill.
Chris, you ready to vote on this, or?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we deny the application of conditional use for separate cores, storage and process of reclaimed asphalt.
So you're gonna deny it without any further discussion, even though we put it on my conditional use?
I second.
You, you would say what?
All opposed? That's it.
What was that Ashley?
So we talked about it, voted on and denied it at one meeting? And you guys had researched, nobody knew anything about it, but I had a packet of information prior, just wanna be clear on record, that I had a packet of information prior to the beginning of this meeting, and nobody researched it prior to the meeting?
Well, I did, I did a lot of research.
You're the one that actually said we could talk about it later on, when you were sitting right there.
Yeah.
I read your packet.
When can I legally come back?
That's how it's supposed to work.
Yeah, I mean, we already talked about this, you know, two meetings ago, we talked about it, so I have it in my conditional use, so we can talk about it, future use, so we can just keep talking about it, that's in registry.
Alright, so we're finished with the agenda tonight, we've got a couple pending projects, but doesn't look like we have any new information.
No.
We're just waiting for, he just wants to, for that okay on property management.
Grab it more, I just want to know so I don't call her, who represents the town of Acton?
You've been contacting, and I'll speak to about their, well.
This is probably a few complex questions for this, and I know most people know. We all set Gavin?
Alright Seth. It wasn't just Gavin, it was all of us.
Yeah, I mean, it takes everyone to vote on it, so, um, yeah, we're just waiting for him to re, reset that design on top of his, his map.
Right.
Cause we were pretty much happy with, happy with what, what he had, it was just.
We were just concerned about the.
The wetlands, right, yeah. Yeah, it was kind of a silly meeting, cause we could have had a site, we almost had a site walk, but.
They buy their water tanks.
Right.
It's in the back corner.
Well, and then there's the one on the side, which we didn't even have.
Oh yeah, kinda.
Yeah.
Yeah, which, I'd like to look at that, cause that's encroaching on him, and maybe that isn't really of the substance it is that, that the other wetland is.
Yeah, yeah, he had like one, two, three, four buildings and one in the back that was right on there.
And the stormwater management for that thing, I wanna make sure that the, the water's not flowing toward the wetland, cause it's a lot impervious altogether, but, and then the, um, this golf course, so we're waiting on it, that guy could be waiting forever.
Yeah, he didn't sound like, he, he, I think he was just coming in for a, he didn't even, he hadn't even gone to the, yeah, he was just trying to, I mean, I think it's a project that he wants to do, but I think he was trying to figure, I don't know. I think he's got a long ways to go.
It's a kind of a lot of costs for a simple, small project.
Right.
Or like, it's gonna take him a long time to recoup those feet.
Isn't that a, I mean, just, just after the fact, but isn't he like a huge slope, the whole, his whole property?
Yeah, it is.
So how does that become a, how do you do that with a disc golf, I mean, you're constantly shooting down, throwing up, or crossing?
Just throw it over your shoulder, I guess.
It makes sense to me that he would come to see it.
There is.
If there's a possibility that he can do it, that there's nothing holding him back, you know?
Yeah, he has to go through site plan review too, that's good, it's a lot.
I've seen, he's been in there, so, and I, there is a driveway that's there.
He makes like pads and.
Yeah, but he's, he's cutting down some sticks and stuff.
Right, that's still logging landing, they were probably 20 years ago, they logged that property.
And someone had that camper in there and stuff, so there was a.
Still there.
Yeah, parts of it, so there was a driveway there, so.
Well, did you see how they got that camper in there?
Yeah.
They like threw a bunch of logs in the ditch and then just drove it over then, then took the logs back out.
Right, but no, further down, further down there's a spot that he can pull in, that looks like it was an old.
Right, exactly, that's like the only, that's the entrance.
I think that's where he wants to put his parking lot.
Right, well, that's the biggest issue, is the, where the flood lane ends and where he wants to put the parking lot, cause the, the land just rises up after the edge of the flood lane, so. Alright, do we know what's, when's our next meeting?
Next week for training.
Oh, we have like a special meeting next week.
Yeah, we have a training next week, regular meeting the following week, and then training on the 28th.
The training is at the same time?
Yeah.
Thursday at six?
Yeah.
At least I can remember it. I know, I, I didn't come in yesterday to, to get my, I just didn't wanna deal with it.
I know, I know, but you did awesome.
Yeah.
You know, it goes back to December, when we first started talking about the asphalt.
Yeah.
I got it on my phone.
Yeah.
It goes back to December, this is not, we didn't decide.
Right, it was on his original.
Right, exactly.
Just let you know, I've, I've got it on my phone.
Well, the research I talked about I did as I looked up.
Have to, we talked to him.
Yeah, for recycled asphalt.
Yeah. Nobody voted, nobody decided ahead of time.
That's yours now.
That's yours now, yeah.
No, but. Yeah, Pat produced it, yeah.
Yeah, that was what I had taken pictures of on my phone, on, you know, back in December, and I just printed it up for you guys.
On the same page that you picked up on, I lost it now, but I was reading it, and before Seth had his thing, I hate to talk about him while he's not here, but he was picking on this saying milled, everything, millings, well, where you found out the unknown risk of pollutants leaching from the waste, the second part of the first sentence, large amount of milled asphalt, so, milled, mill, I don't know where he was going.
Yeah.
I was waiting for it to.
So that the chemicals.
Yeah, well, I feel like he has sufficient use of the property with his, you know, he's, he has full use of that property, so, you know what I mean, you're not denying, supposed to deny someone use of their property, you know what I mean, but this is nothing, I don't think we did.
Nope, nope, we didn't.
Right. So, okay, so we have a, like a, who, who is the meeting with next week, is it Southern Maine?
Yeah.
Yeah, Southern Maine.
Southern Maine.
Okay.
And. Right, I don't know how long, last, I don't know how long ago, I thought we had one with North Star, when we first.
Kinda, but.
Yeah.
I think it does make sense to use Southern Maine too, just to get, get different opinions or to, different people's input.
Right.
Lot of information to be shared, so, didn't want to overload us with a four hour.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's too much. Yeah, you don't remember half the stuff if you're doing like that, okay. Alright, I'm making a motion, we adjourn the meeting?
One second.
All in favor? All opposed? Alright. Thank you.